All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular board meeting. The order is based on the date of the one day, December 6th, 2019, 6:00 PM. Captain, we call the board.
Trustee Lam, trustee Selle.
Here.
Trustee Wood.
Yeah.
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Andreessen.
Here.
Trustee Cooney.
Here.
President Miller.
Here. And I believe trustee Lam will decide that he will not be able to defend it. All right, good. We'll get Brian to join me in the public.
(inaudible). Sports of agents, to the fact that we're the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. That takes us to public comment on agenda items. The other elected across this board is here saying that we move on to consent agenda. We have non-business, we have non-driven business. We have three items on air versus our fly 2019 audit presentation.
Okay, we'll turn over to the auditors if you want to answer the auditors. Sure, we have some gap here from Lotterback and Amon to present on the audit.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. We have completed the audit. The village's fiscal year ended April 30th, 2019, and officially issued the comprehensive annual financial report. I'm going to go over some brief highlights and then gladly open up a question. First and foremost, I'd like to say that the audit process went extremely well. It's been a pleasure working with Jennifer and Brandis and Ishmael and the whole team. The next thing I want to point out is also in order of congratulation, the because the village issues a comprehensive annual financial report, they're eligible to receive a certificate from the government, the Finance Officers Association. So the page 11 of the report does present the certificate from last year, and we fully expect that this year's report will also run the certificate, which the village has been getting for a few years now. The very next thing I will point out, page 12, the only page with our letterhead on, is essentially the product of our work, titled the independent auditor's report. At the top of the following page is where we issue what we call an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean audit opinion. It is the highest level of assurance that we are allowed to give. Immediately following the auditor's report is management's discussion and analysis. I always say, if you don't read anything else in this nearly 200-page report, read these 10 pages or so. It presents in fairly readable fashion some key financial highlights, an overview of how the report is laid out, and some analysis of this year versus last year and why some of those numbers have changed. In particular, the village's total net position, or I call it the all-in number, is the sum of the operations of the village, in addition to some of those long-term items, the long-term assets of the village minus the long-term debt, equaling total net position, actually increased 7.6% from prior year. The general fund also did report a surplus resulting in an increase of 107.4%. That number is awfully large because of some fund consolidation, we'll mention in more detail at a moment. The management's discussion analysis does provide an overview of sort of the village as a whole, as well as the individual funds. On an individual fund level, I will point out from a budgetary standpoint, the general fund did have better-than-expected performance. The village had budgeted a net decrease in fund balance, but revenues came in higher and expenditures came in lower. I am aware some of the expenditure containment was some intentional cost control in the personnel area. Moving on to the actual financial statements themselves, I want to point out a few things that are notable. Pages 32, 33, and then 35 and 36 represent the balance sheet and the income statement with the governmental funds of the village, basically where most of the operations are recorded. A few things that you'll note, first and foremost, a overall total positive fund balance at the end of the year, that is a good thing. Less good is the overall negative unassigned fund balance, which is the amount of money left over that you are free to spend. The fact that it's a negative number is actually due to the TIF funds, which at the current time are not self-sustaining. You'll also notice there are two lines on pages 32 and 33. One is advances to other funds, one is advances from other funds. That represents the amounts that most of TIF funds are borrowing from the funds that have money on a temporary basis until those TIF funds grow and are able to pay down those balances. Two pages later in the income statement, again similar, the positive thing to note here is that there was a total increase in fund balance of about $708,000, which is the general fund primarily offset by some of the negative performance of the TIF funds. The general fund did show a particularly large increase in fund balance, and that is primarily due to the consolidation of the home room sales tax fund into the general fund. So most of that is a large transfer that went from home room sales tax to general. On the topic of transfers, I do want to point out, the village undertook quite a project in cleaning up a lot of the inter-fund transactions. There were a lot of transactions from prior years that had been recorded as transfers that really should have been balances owed. So we were presented with a very good detailed list of what should have been announced and cleaned up. So you'll see a lot of that transfer activity this year. That'll be significantly simpler in future years. A couple pages later, you have, on page 40, is the income statement for water sewer funds. Those are reported a little bit differently, reported like a business, so they're sort of all-in. One thing I want to point out is always a good thing, operating income about a third way down the page is positive for both the water and sewer funds. That means that the operating costs are being satisfied by the charges for the water sewer services. A large part of this report represents the note disclosures. Because I realize I'm not the most exciting thing on the agenda tonight, I won't go through a lot of those note disclosures in detail, or anything to that matter, but they are to contain a lot of sort of backup information for some key parts of the report. But I'm just gonna head to, starting with page 87, is some trend information for how the pension funds of the village during the states and I M R F and the police pension fund. On page 88, I want just one to point out, the village is sort of a few years behind, but is improving their funding of the police pension fund. So you will notice that the most recent fiscal year, the contributions have increased narrowing the gap between what has been an actuarially determined contribution and what it's actually be put in. Pages 89 and 90.
Tim can't stop just for one minute to this important point. I've elaborated over and over again to Tim, but the contributions that are actuarially determined here are actually the ones that are prepared by Lotterback and Amon as our independent actuary. We are, have been satisfying the contributions determined by the Department of Insurance.
Yes.
So when you see that there was a deficiency, it wasn't a true deficiency I would require to pay per state sanction.
Right. You're fully compliant with the state requirements. Thanks. Pages 89 and 90 show the development of how well I M R F has been funded for the village's account. This has been experienced by every single I M R F employer in the state, but as of calendar year ended 12/31/18, funding level did drop quite a bit, and that is actually due to very poor market performance. The net investment income dropped significantly between 2017 and 2018. Already, we have seen a significant improvement this in 2019, but that funding level will improve in the next fiscal year. And the last thing I wanted to point out is a particularly useful part of the report. And it's a part of the report that you really only see because the village issues a comprehensive financial report, and that is the statistical sections. That section presents a number of different presentations over the course of 10 years, so you can kind of track how things have developed over time. The one I will mention, there's page 141 at the bottom of I M R F, the building with lengthy display, shows the development of the change in that position over time, and it has actually improved quite a bit from a particularly high negative amount in 2013 all the way up to a $4.2 million increase in 2019. So again, I do recommend for using the statistical section to sort of see where you've been and how it's developed and where you're at now. At this point, I'm more than happy to answer any questions before I can.
Hi, I'm sorry. Just a little lost on this whole thing. The only thing that's in our village board packet is actually the management report, not this whole big report. We don't have copies of what everything that you went through, all the pages. So is that going to be shared with us? It can be shared electronically or?
Yeah, it's actually, oh, I'm sorry. It's actually uploaded on our website, and we do have a few hard copies if you guys want that I can provide.
If there's, it's on the site. Yeah, that would be better to start out with a whole.
I'm sorry, Catherine.
So that we could refer to.
The link to the board. No, we didn't include that document or, I'm sorry, we meant to include the link to the document in the email to the agenda packet, and we must have.
Yeah.
Not done yet in the projects. Brandis, do you want to summarize something about the M D N A?
No, I'll finish everything that I have in session to discuss.
So as included in your agenda packet, if I may, is a call for you to, if you have time to read the documents that were attached and the transmittal letter and the M D N A. These are probably the most important pieces of the audit, in addition to the right statistical section that Tim mentioned. But I do want to hit a few highlights for you. So part of the transmittal letter, which is something that is drafted by him, talks about the major initiatives for the year. So some of these seem like far away, because you have to remember, we're ending April 30th, 2019 here, but I want to call your attention to some of these. One of the bullet points that's on page 5, talks about the financial recovery, and Tim did mention, but we did see an increase in the total cash investments of $1.4 million. So that's actual cash in the bank. We don't have a lot of timing as far as revenues coming in and out. You know, property taxes are relatively insignificant here, so that's a pretty true number of where we are. And if you recall, last year was about a million dollar change in cash in the business, and the year prior, we overcame a negative cash of 1.1 million. So we've done fairly well here as far as our change in financial position over the last couple of years, and I just wanted to point that out. The easiest way to wrap your brain around Eastundy's financial position is the cash, because the funds are distorted from borrowing from other funds. It's very difficult to understand, for example, how well the general fund is doing, because it has subsidized the TIF funds so heavily that the numbers are distorted. The general fund will look like it's doing very well. So there is a page, there's a chart on page eight of the transmittal letter that talks about the cash balance, and that is something I included in there to show you that we are approaching what could be a healthy fund balance of 25%. We're about right there with 26. Usually, when these policies are written, they're written as a fund balance, but since our fund balance isn't necessarily meaningful here, I'm recommending we come back to the board for the cash balance policy now that we're able to do that. And that policy would tell us, okay, we need to be at 25%. What do we do when we're over 25%? Where have we brought those funds? And if we say something like police pension, capital projects, or whatever the part we report. So I wanted to call that to your attention, that that's very good news. The other thing I wanted to call to your attention is, we're required to include a section here called factors affecting the financial position. And so these are some of the things that happened in the past, and some of the corruptions that we made in the future. I just want you to make sure you read through it to understand that some of the things that we have done, we need to, I recommend continuing to do, like funding the pension, continuing targeting for revenues, continuing cost containment measures with employees and expenditures, because that's how we have this positive change over the last couple years. So that's something we should look to continue doing. Also, the transmittal letter, I talked about some of the long-term financial planning that we've done, and I recommend that we continue to do that. The board adopted the water sewer rates. The board also is looking at, what we'll be looking at in 2021, we'll be looking at whether or not to refinance some of our debt. As you, we're putting a capital program that's funded by video gaming revenue, so no way of funding true for that. And then we have continued to keep up with our chumonge planning with the TIFs and BDDs. And that gap between revenues and expenditures for the BDDs overall is narrowing. It is narrowing. So that's the good news. At one point, it was about a million dollar deficit, and it is narrowing significantly in the long-term agenda. So we're on the right track. Those are kind of the things I wanted to point out to you, and then, you know, myself or Brandis or Tim can answer any other questions. And I, again, I apologize that you didn't have the audit. I thought we included the link, and I guess we did not, so I forget. But it should be on the website. It is on the website.
Any questions? How long have you, how long has Lotterback?
Lotterback and Amon.
How long have you guys been auditing Eastundy?
I believe this is year two or three. Just three.
It's three.
Short term. Yeah.
How many other villages do you have service for just across?
Oh, gosh. Well, municipalities, we are close to 100.
Okay. Good. It's nice for.
Oh, yeah. It's 95% of what we do as local token work.
You mentioned that our TIF funds are not self-sustaining. That sounds bad. Is it bad?
It's, it's, it's also depends on the direction and the development and the agreements in place and how they're progressing. So, you know, obviously with the TIFs, you know, the goal is to spark the development, the funding that sparks the property values arrays, and then, you know.
So how, I guess my question then is, how in line is that with, say, 100 other so municipalities that you audit? How normal is that to be underwater on the TIFs?
That is probably the question I get the most and the one I hesitate the most to answer, simply because every single community is different, has its own circumstances and histories, and agreements in place and development interests. So, you know, is it unusual for a TIF to have challenges? Absolutely not. You know, can I directly compare Eastundy to any other community? That sort of gets a little bit, a little bit more great.
But it's not, so it's not unheard of.
No.
You know, 33%, 50%, you know, whatever.
I don't think I could give you a number in that field that would be accurate.
Trustee, if you can, I mean, maybe help you out. I have, you know, been privy to other information on other, you know, other TIFs and how they're doing, and the one thing I'd say is that we have, we were heavily, heavily self-sustaining this year.
Right.
And we were making commitments that exceeded the TIF that was being generated.
Right.
But prior to me coming on the board, the board did make a commitment not to do that anymore. So there is no more bleeding, essentially. Also, we've seen a 34% E A V growth since the low of the recession, which is why our revenues, our expenditures are, they're starting to taper off. Well, they're during the last month, so I don't know where, but we've paid off some of our huge commitments, but our revenues are increasing. And so that gap is narrowing, and a lot of times you'll see towns with TIFs underwater, and their E A V hasn't grown at all, or it's flipped upside down. And that happened to Cool County, and it was, so I will tell you that, I mean, I don't have the answer that you're asking either, but I feel confident that the TIF is doing what it's supposed to be doing, and that we can, we can afford our long-term commitments. That's, that's.
Jennifer, could I, would we, Andrew, say, because again, my suspicion is that part of the reason we're underwater is that we have, you know, one developer in particular that pulled a lot of money out of the TIF three years rather than 20, you know, basically got advanced the money, that we're now paying on back, basically paying on the come. So a lot of these TIFs that are underwater right now, I mean, as we look down the road, will actually catch more positive. They're just not there yet. Is that fair to you?
I, my projections show that they could be, which is why it's so important for us to understand how much is due to back to the general fund. That's why we did all the homework to make sure we could account for whatever was owed back to the general, because once the TIFs do produce a surplus that we gave to drive back. But there's multiple reasons. Yes, we had some commitments like that, and yes, they're getting, we're getting paid back, you know, but there is some, there's a lot of debt that we chose into assigned to the TIFs, and that's really where a lot of the excitement comes from, from the debt that was taken on, like the general obligation bonds, that instead of charging the residents through property taxes, as you recall, we evade those, and we use the TIF fund. So as long as we have enough money essentially between the general and the TIFs, we evade those and we pay them off, and we're doing just fine. But, I mean, you are.
So the TIFs are actually being, and for very specific reason, are almost artificially being kept down a little bit because they are actually paying ongoing obligations.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, essentially, yeah, we could, we could choose to charge the residents for the debt, but when the debt was taken, to me, it was clear at the time that it would be taken as a TIF project, and so we're trying to honor that. Plus, we only have so many residents, so we talked about home rule, during home rule, what would happen if we charged the residents for that debt? We decided that wasn't the best, you know, we were for that. So, depending on your.
Yeah, that's.
I think one other thing I just want to add and correct me if I'm incorrect on this, that TIF funds are not bank accounts. You can't store the money in there. They're used to create revenue that you then have to spend within a certain amount of time on certain projects. So they're not necessarily supposed, they may be cash cows and generating revenue, but that revenue then has to be spent on a project. So it's not like we can just take, you know, we can't just take all that money and put it into our general account.
Yeah, you would have to surplus it.
But right now, it sounds like we're going to take money out of the general, not take it into the TIF, which.
The whole point of the TIF, though, at its most basic is, I have an empty piece of land, and so the developer, he puts something there, and then he gets.
I understand that, so this government is trying to figure out where we're at and so on.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
It is a balancing, you don't want to have huge surpluses in there, because one, then you're not, you're not doing the reinvestment, and that's the whole purpose, and then you have to, what's required by law is you have surplus, you have to rebate the tax and rights, which is, which is fine, but it defeats the purpose of having a TIF. So it is, you probably want to be a little bit home surplus.
Moving over to the police mansion, again, we're saying we're higher than what the state requires, you're saying we're less than what you guys recommend. That's the same question about the TIFs. Where are we at compared to other municipalities?
I would say you're kind of middle of the road. There's always a bit of a game between, you know, the minimum requirement set by statute and the whatever is issued by an independent actuary as far as their recommended contribution. And that recommended contribution is subject to all sorts of actuarial factors, assumptions of investment return and, you know, mortality and things like that. So the, the village is required, obviously, to comply with statute. They're not required by any measure to, to fund the actuary's recommendation, but the comprehensive annual financial report is required to report what that recommendation was and what the actuary. So unfortunately, we don't have the option of including that statutory minimum to show that you're in compliance, but I would say middle of the road as far as communities and which options they're choosing to fund that.
And we, prior to, we, we planned some additional increases. So the first thing we did was, this fiscal year, 18, 19, we funded, we raised taxes 13%, and so we went over and above the state's statute. That was first time. Then the 19, 20 budget, we increased to the Lotterback and Amon regulations, which was an additional 130 something thousand.
130 something.
Yeah, and then the Letty discussion we just had recently, that will be a budget priority to come to that recommendation again, because.
So, so in saying that we're not at the recommended, you're talking about not this past, budgeted this past, that'll show up in the actual report.
Yeah, because this is behind, so the next one will be funding to the recommendation. And when I looked at, before we raised the taxes 13%, I did look at the average was 52% and 52%. Now hopefully, the state consolidation will also be the change right for us too.
Yeah, it's also noteworthy that the actuary recommendation lags by two years behind the fiscal year end of the report. So, you know, if you make changes now, they're going to, those changes are going to show up in two years in terms of the contribution.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, that takes us to item B. Do you have a motion on item B, please?
I make a motion to approve ordinance extending the sunset clause for the depot food trap zone ordinance, ordinance 19-28.
I'll second.
Very good. Any discussion on this? All right. Kevin?
Trustee Selle.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
All right, and would you have a motion on item C here?
I make a motion to approve ordinance amending chapter 37 fee and fines schedule of the village restundy village code regarding liquor license endorsement fees.
Second.
Discussion on the, I don't know if anyone, this is a housekeeping, but if the guy's something in front, that's the same $100, you're going to have a fee schedule.
Yes, and the other one is we're recommending taking away the right-of-way service of doors company, because they're participating in our pass, and we're trying to make it more cost-effective.
Any questions on that? Kevin?
Trustee Selle.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Cooney.
Yes.
All right, very good. Financial reports, I think we have enough there. I have my report, assuming we're on the board. Trustee Cooney.
I have a question. I noted in George's report about the accidents in the snow. I'm assuming this is mostly on the hill, or is that correct?
It's correct.
I've experienced that myself, some, got an accident on that hill. My question is, I understand it's not our responsibility to salt that road, but would it be beneficial to everybody if we did?
So this has been discussed in detail at Jennifer's weekly staff meeting, and the decision has been made that in the interest of traffic safety, the village will salt in the future. Going forward. the village will salt in the future going forward.
All right, that's good, I think. I mean, especially, I mean, the hill, maybe I don't think you have a lot of problems on the side areas, but that hill is pretty slim, yes.
Yeah, and we've worked with IDAT, Dylan, I don't know if you want to come on, we're discussing with you guys with IDAT.
Sure, so I personally had competition with IDAT St. Charles yard. They're the most responsible for the stretch, all of our shit routes in and around Eastundy. I think further out, still a nice, and I think they call out around twenty-five. They, they assigned one driver to our entire area, so not only Eastundy, but Eastern Blas, maybe almost up to forty-seven, I'm not sure it's quite that far.
Oh, wow.
It's a, it's a lengthy area, I mean, forty-seven, but that's moving out that direction.
Yeah.
Quite honestly, we're just not equipped, staffed and wise according to the state to maintain this area of, like, we would like them, and perhaps even if they needed to do it themselves, but they would like to maintain it to have a certain level. So what, oftentimes, since I've been in Eastundy, we have worked with IDAT. We will supplement saltings and our plow on occasion when and where it would be. At least while this contact will be directly asked for assistance on occasion, and we certainly do that. And to this point, we'll continue to do that, so.
Will it become the norm now, Phil?
You know, I think until something more permanent changes, I think it will have to be, yes. Their point is still maintain it primarily, but we will supplement when and where possible. For example, when their truck runs up salt, it's a round trip back to St. Charles and back here. So if you've got, if you're fighting three, four, five inches of snow, right? It takes their driver hour plus to get to St. Charles or more, and then an hour plus back to resume their plowing operations, salting operations.
These are official.
Now, east of twenty-five comes out of the Rothenberg, Schaumburg yard. So it's, we're essentially serviced by two different yards, but downtown area and to the west is out of St. Charles yard, so.
And when you say supplementing salting, does that mean actual salting as well as branding, or?
We, where and where possible, we will, if there's a situation where this particular stretch will be some salt, we will apply the salt from our barn. And we have, in the last two winters, received truckloads of salt from the state to compensate for us using our salts.
Oh, that's great.
Several loads of salt the past couple of winters to, as a, as a thank you or.
Offset.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so.
I have nothing, but I just want to say I'm very sorry I missed the Eastundy. I was out of town in New York, but I heard it was gonna, so thank you for all that help, and that's all.
Good, trust me. Let's take a listen.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I should report on the Community Events Committee meeting we had prior to this meeting, which we discussed the entire year's and community events. And Amanda and Brad were very, very good at writing up a summary for us in that. We've made a few, not decisions thus far, but we will be meeting with the local restaurants to determine moving forward how we feel it is best to have them participate in the Wind Out Wednesdays, Thursday Thursdays, Oktoberfest and those kinds of things because we're getting a little bit of mixed messaging from, I think, both sides probably. So we're going to be discussing that with the local restaurants. And overall, I think the community events were an amazing success this year. Unfortunately, we didn't have the best of weather for Oktoberfest. Hopefully, next year, we can beat that a little. But we continue, actually, we are planning on continuing all the events that we had last year. And we may be adding a few on Sundays so we can get some people into the town on Sundays that will continue to give our businesses some visibility. And that's it.
Very good.
Still one report.
I read that report too, and I was real impressed. And how many people we had relative to the cost? I mean, I know there were years where we had three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in costs, and.
Yeah, that's a good point, so for those of you.
Amanda and the rest of you can stand.
We were fifteen thousand under budget on the allocated funding for community events this year. So, or actually twenty, we came in at eighty-four and budgeted a hundred and five.
Quite impressive.
So.
Well, and the St. Patrick's parade is still on that fiscal year.
Yes, St. Patrick's is still on our list this year, but, but it's not a big cost to the city.
Okay. Very good. Vol. Administrator.
I just wanted to remind you, Catherine, help me out, there's an employee holiday luncheon Thursday.
Thursday.
River Street Tavern upstairs, if you can make it.
If we didn't give you, if I, my schedule freed up and I didn't think I could make it, but now I can. Can I still come?
Yeah, I'll shoot them, yeah, yeah, I'll shoot them in, I'll just say one more.
Yeah, I didn't think I was gonna be able.
We have twenty-nine right now.
Nice. It's a big group.
Over all the commissions, there's like two from each commission, police pension.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I have one other item, lots of things in the bid that they report, but one thing I wanted to call your attention to is we finally have IDAT approval for our right-of-way for the, for Stevens Drive and Route seventy-two, St.. Thank you, Attorney Smith. He's worked on this for eight years.
We don't think so, five hundred days. It's coming. We're off that here, right?
It's okay, the charges are being passed along. We are hoping to go to bid in January. Unfortunately, IDAT's telling us now we need to change our bid package to meet twenty-twenty spec because we're, yes, because we're at the end of twenty nineteen, we have to make applications to that. But regardless, it looks like.
It's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen, and we're gonna construct, hopefully, spring. So that's all I have, unless there's anything else for me.
Okay, Vol. Administrator, number two. Jennifer asked that I share with you an incident over the weekend. About one-thirty in the morning, Sergeant Host was flagged out by, you know, over the village center. The chief said, right over there, there's a guy who's highly intoxicated and probably could use your help.
Where was the chief, sir? The village center, what do you mean by?
By the depot.
Oh, by the depot, oh, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, that's what I called those.
Okay.
So Sergeant Host began dragging in his direction, but the man was walking away from him and didn't see him. And he can't jog in, in his drunken state, and then sprinting along Jackson Street toward water. He had not seen a police officer. So Sergeant Host sees him sprint across Water Street and goes straight into the river. It's one-thirty in the morning, it was rather cool. So Sergeant Host gets out of his squad car, runs to the river's edge, doesn't see anybody. But then the guy, the man's head popped out and saw the officer. Tried to tell the officer, leave me alone, I'm killing myself. And they went back and forth with that, him paddling out to more of the center of the river and then coming in close and then going back. Eventually, went back up there, eventually the man was pulled out of the river and insisted that he get to kill himself. So of course, he was transported to hospital. This is a crazy time of the year. The holidays are crazy. And we just had aggregated battery charges approved or a bar fight situation, and some people were seriously hurt. So it's, it's a crazy time. It is every year.
Very good. Vol. Bruce.
Just have one quick report to you on something. As you may know, we have a water treatment plant, we have two wells, a shallow well and a deep well. Since the treatment plant was put into service sixty, seventy years ago, only the shallow well has been in operation providing water to the community. Well, as of late this morning, I'm pleased to report that the deep well is now efficient to provide the water to the distribution system. We've been working for several months with Greg and our water staff and consultants. Excited, I'm pleased to report, shared the news with Jennifer, some are.
Well done.
Keeping a close eye on it, but, so it's, we're pretty busy.
I did do that.
Shallow well down, pretty interesting.
No, no, so there's, right now, both wells are producing water to about fifty-five. So we have eleven hundred gallons per minute, and so it's about fifty-five per each well. So five, between five and six hundred gallons per minute per as well.
So what, now there was at one time like an issue where if you mix them, they got, you got like a ton of results, just like that, that's been rectified, or?
Correct, well, we, the consultant that we worked with is extraordinarily confident that the treatment system that we have, after lakes, after lakes, will effectively address the concerns that, with that exact concern.
Okay.
We're obviously continuing to monitor the water quality, but I think it's very positive and excited to be in this position, so.
Yeah, as a reminder, background, because I don't sense the excitement.
I'm proud to surround her, and I'm, I'm very excited.
So.
It's not just the point.
I'm just kidding. We're gonna soften the water, and we were unable to soften the water from the deep well in the shallow well. And we were told that this could be a five hundred thousand to one million dollar solution. So it's a big problem, so a deep well was drilled that was never utilized. So we spent a little bit of money on a B consultant, a man with four years of experience who solved our problem, and it has been, the cost has been significantly beyond that study. And now the well is up and running today, which is why, you know, we're excited about, oh, wow.
Well, just to, I think the expenditures that we're, I think we're still paying off that mon, right? For that well?
Yes.
So the expenditures that are coming out of the residents and other mon, taxes, are actually being put to something.
Yes, and it makes sense that you pull water from the shallow aquifer and the deep aquifer.
Sure.
You know, it's first. Which waters, new ice and aquifers are replenished, so it's good that we're using it, and so.
And how often will testing of the water quality be done, Phil?
Oh, it's weekly. In fact, someone asked questions daily.
And it started operating when?
This morning, late this morning. We've tested it on a monthly basis throughout over the last, since the well was put into place. But as far as today, put into service, it will run, and water from both wells will be blended together and be pushed into the system. So, I mean, at this point, I think well six ran for just over two hours today. The reason why it didn't run more is because the system didn't call for it, so there's a lower demand right now, but.
Not summertime where you need more, where you're useless.
So once the wells are recharged, they'll fill up to two towers, and once the tower's drained, the pumps will kick on again, so we, and again, a lot of it. Fairly, we put lots of water.
All right, anything else?
No.
That answer.
We just wanted to reiterate that we are starting a budget process. In a few months, we hope to have a workshop with this document.
Good.
Yeah, and as part of the process, we usually set up like a budget initiative form, which is this, this is your opportunity, if you have a budget idea, to present it. You don't want to wait till the budget workshop. If you have something that you feel that we should budget, Brandon will distribute that forms when she distributes the budget spreadsheet to the department. And then, so if and them are just calling me to talk to me.
Okay.
I just have one, a few that the chief was saying. This time of the year, to remind people that there is an e-commerce meetup spot in the lobby downstairs, which I've used twice this week.
Have you?
So. Clean that up in the background. But it's, it's a really great time and a really good time to be saving actually one of the offices.
You're on video, so that should be really sure.
Yep.
Did you ever notice the toys for us?
Yes.
Gosh, we just, oh, magnificent, Paul.
That's great. And did, and you guys participated in Chopper the Cop as well, right?
Yes.
So, thank you.
Finally, what would comment on anything? Sorry. Yeah, no, that's a session this evening, so unfortunately, we will need a motion to adjourn.
Say it, all here, bye, I'll see you again. Happy holidays.